Good afternoon. This is a meeting of the Plating and Zoning Commission of the City of Laredo. Today is August the 2nd. And I'm calling this meeting to order. First item that we have is a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Erasmo Villarreal.
Present.
Vice Chairman is Mr. Jose Tejas.
Present.
Carlos Flores, Javier Campián.
Present.
Blackstone. Raúl Ugaldé, Johnny Navais.
Present.
Jovi Arrial.
Present.
Daniel López Jr.
Present.
Jorge Gómez.
Present.
For the record, you have four. Thank you, thank you.
Commotion to excuse Commissioners Flores and Ugaldé.
We have motion, do we have second? And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item that we have is Pledge of Allegiance, if everybody could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item that we have is the consideration of the approval of the minutes of July 18th.
We did not get the video for the last P&amp;Z meeting on time.
Okay.
The receipt is.
Alright. Do you have any citizens' comments? Alright, go to item number six. Item six says a consideration to vacate Law 3 Block 1 of Protex subdivision as recorded in March 28, 2005, Volume 25, Page 27, Web County Records. Alright.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to recoup myself from this item just to avoid any conflict of interest.
Very good.
Are you excused?
Yes. Okay. This site is a 0.9330 acre tract, it's located south of State Highway 359 and east of Rancho Grande Drive. The zoning for this one lot development is B1. Okay? What are the, this is just a vacation of a plat, so does anybody have any questions on this particular vacation? From the commission? I know Mr. Guerra is here, Guerra Engineering, if anybody has any questions? If nobody has any questions, what are the wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item is item 7A. Preliminary consideration, uh, just a minute. Item 7A, this is a preliminary consideration of the plat of Mars Warrior Properties, the intent is commercial. This site is 2.0568 acre tract located north of Jaime Zapata Memorial Highway and east of Rancho Grande Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recoup myself also on this item because it's relevant to the first one.
Alright. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from the Planning Department. And a notice to developer from the Planning Department. Guerra Engineering is the engineer of record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Fred Guerra with Guerra Engineering, we agree with the comments.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Guerra on this plat? If not, what are the wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you. Next item is item 7B, preliminary consideration of the plat of London Square. The intent is commercial. The site is 1.85 acre tract. It is located west of Casaveta Road and north of Jacobin Road. The zoning for this one lot development is R1. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning, from engineering, from fire. And notice to developer from planning. The South Texas Testing Lab is the engineer of record.
He did notify me that he was not going to be able to attend the meeting, but he does concur with the comments.
Okay, very good. What are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve, subject to the following comments.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you. Next item is item 8A, preliminary reconsideration of the plat of Las Fincas subdivision Phase 1. The intent is residential. The site is 32.65 acre tract and is located south of State Highway 359 and east of EG Ranch Road. The zoning for this 160 lot development is R1A. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning, engineering, fire, no, traffic, upcounting, and a notice to developer. Engineer of record is Howland.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ricardo Villarreal, Howland Engineering. I'm here to talk a little bit on the project. There are a couple of comments that we do, we would like to discuss and kind of amend in a way. The first one, the easier one is, I know there's a comment by traffic and it's the third one, if we can, there we go. There's a comment that the street Farmer Road and the elementary school driveway here and Farmer Road, that they could be too close. When the original landowner, EG Ranch, conveyed the elementary school to UISD, there were an agreement that a road needed to be built south, along the south property line of the school. And that gave the school access to that road. It just wasn't built when the school was developed. But it was put on the responsibility of the developer at that time, which carried over to any other subsequent developers that purchased that land. So this road is bound by the deed and the agreement of when the transfer of land was given to UISD. There's an existing already access easement there, we're just putting the road that's required based off of that agreement. So on that comment, that gives UISD also a right to tie into this road in case there's any future conflicts with their prototype, which is this is UISD's prototype for an elementary school. So I don't know if there's any comments on basically what I've stated.
Let me ask you a question, what is the distance between the street and that entrance for that driveway?
Uh, the street from, I'm going from edge to edge, it's about 50 feet.
Okay.
And is that the entrance portion of the school or is that the exit portion of the school?
That's the exit portion of the school. So the entrance for the front of the school is this one and it routes here.
Well, that's for the walkers.
And then the entrance, I believe, is this way and it comes around, drop off, pickup, and then it leaves.
Okay.
And then, so this road gives UISD in the future an emergency access or an additional access to tie into this road for better circulation. And that's what they've been wanting more and more as UISD develops, they want more frontage along. They would love to have four roads around their school. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen. And if you see all the new developments, you all have probably seen other elementary schools come through here. It's basically roughly the same, the same prototype, the same idea of having four entrances along the front part of the school. So that's more of an agreement that has been made. And I know traffic has seen, I know traffic's here, traffic has seen these prototypes come through many, many, many times. And these driveways were aligned with the driveways on the other side because there is a middle school on the other side. So they were aligned to limit any type of conflict in the future, so.
What is the width of Farmer Road?
The width is 41 back to back. The width of EG Ranch, it's 59 in front of the schools, then it narrows down on the southern end to 52 back to back.
How many lanes on Farmer?
Farmer, it can handle two lanes, one going east direction and a turning lane, sir.
What was the distance that traffic was requesting?
The, I'm not quite sure what they were requesting, it was just a comment that said that they were too close.
Would have anybody from traffic here?
I believe so.
Sinai Castor from Traffic Department. The reason we make this kind of comments is because when we have driveways and streets that are too close, that creates points of conflicts. And the closer you have them, the more point of conflicts you create. And there's a bigger possibility of accidents because the drivers are not going to have the time to react and maneuver, to make the turns, the necessary turns. So that's the reason why we make that comment. I don't know if Runaway Santos has any specific distance that has to be kept in between driveways and streets. I don't know, I don't know what's the rule, but from my experience, that's what I can tell.
Mr. Villarreal, and your request to, that comment to be deleted?
Yes, and the reason is because of the restrictions that we have on the land. If it were up to us, we wouldn't have that road there. But we have to, we're bound by the agreement that UISD made with the original landowner where we have to put a road there. There already is an access easement there, we're just putting now the improvements for that access easement.
So traffic, would you have a problem if that item is deleted?
I'm sorry, what was the idea?
The comment, the comment on traffic. You're representing traffic and they have a comment?
I will, I will have to discuss it with my supervisors, but we already met and we already agree on that comment. I don't know what would be your solution to that?
I mean, the solution can be, and I can't, I can't really make that call, but if that driveway is in conflict, that driveway can be moved to Farmer Road now. That exit can be moved to Farmer Road because those two driveways that are entering, this one here and this one here, are already close enough. So that, we're just providing what the school had requested and extra means of ingress and egress for them. So that, I think we're, even, I think we're making the situation better in a way by putting that road because it gives them a different out, as opposed to just having four driveways really close together right now. It's just reconfiguring the driveways for UISD if traffic would like another driveway off of Farmer Road. So it's kind of a hard question for me to answer because it's beyond my control, other than I'm pretty much bound to build the road there.
So why don't we leave the comment and then we try to fix it up, because we don't have any answers?
If we can, if we can fix it at the time of a one-stop shop, I'm more than happy to discuss that. I think when everything comes to light and the deeds come into light, I have the deeds here, I don't want to go through all that where the deeds have an access easement, the agreements are there, you know, I just, I know certain comments when they come to P&amp;Z and if we don't know, buy, buy them, it could be binding for us in final.
But are you in charge of that elementary, I believe it's CEC, no?
Yeah, no, well, the elementary school is online, so now it's UISD, now it would be UISD.
No, well, the one that made like the driveways for that elementary, it was CEC or it was you guys?
No, it was, I believe, SMB.
Or?
SMB.
Crane, it's because there are like a lot of engineers working in this area. I believe it's CEC, crane engineer, engineering, and Howland. So it will have to be like a lot of, we will have to make a meeting so we will agree, because I really don't know which one.
And that's fine, go ahead and say something on this thing, because I think the solution to this is not that complex.
Can I, can I ask?
Let me just finish, let me just finish. I don't think the solution to this is that complex, you know. By abiding in this particular street that you're building here through a contractual agreement of the school district, if a conflict on the right turns becomes a problem, they will probably, I mean, from a logical point of view, you would close that driveway and open one over here on, is that Farmer Road on the bottom?
Yes, yes, sir.
To me, that would probably be the solution that would resolve this problem pretty quick. But again, that's just my comment, okay? I'm sorry, Commissioner Tejas.
Is this like a new rule that traffic is coming up with or is this something that you guys came up with today?
Um, it is.
It's been in place, I'm sorry.
It is on the Ashtoe books, you can find, you can find it. It shows that when you have a road intersecting, it shows you all the points of conflicts. So when you bring these two roads closer, you're going to create more points of conflict. It is in a book. It is not an ordinance, but it is in the books of design.
Because my question, I asked that because when we reviewed the plat for United High School, 9th Grade Campus, there was no comment and it had the same issue.
The same issue?
When we had Colonel Santos Benavides, it has the same issue, it was never brought up. When we had the San Isidro Elementary School, which we've had that plat come before us numerous times, it's never been brought up.
Okay.
For some reason, it's brought up now, and I just find it suspicious that we bring in restrictions that have never been used before, never been brought up before.
Yeah.
Because the department, because staff has a problem with this project. And so I'm asking, because if we're going, that, it's counterintuitive to bring up new restrictions if that's part of his requirement to the deed. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, as I'm saying, as I'm telling you, it's not an ordinance, but you can find guidance on the books. And it's based on experience. Like, maybe in the past, we wouldn't implement things that we already knew. But then after cars start colliding in certain ways, is when we are like, no, we have to take a specific look into this. We, we do research on the accidents that happen in the city. We get the accidents from TechDOT and from other institutions, from police. And after researching those accidents, is how we come with new ideas to improve the traffic and the safety of the public.
And so does UISD. UISD has a department dedicated to setting up incoming traffic, outgoing traffic. In fact, they separate people that are walkers as compared to bus riders, as compared to drop offs.
Uh huh.
And so they, and they actually have people that stand there and inspect these every day. In fact, in two weeks, when school opens up, UISD sends people to do this. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Like, sometimes there's other people that inspect this a whole heck of a lot more than the city does. And I would kind of defer to UISD's judgment in securing our children than necessarily traffic that doesn't always do studies at the specific schools.
I can further answer that. I think Sinai is saying that, yes, we do have guidelines to follow certain spacing within driveways. However, in schools, since they're kind of a different animal, they've gone a little bit, it's mainly peak traffic, it's not constant traffic all day. So the way the traffic department has looked at it is, the school has controlled access into their property. So they have crossing guards, they have security guards that handle this type of traffic and this situation. And so that's why they're allowed to have these type of driveways. If it were any other business, just a regular business that doesn't have controlled access, yes, then you can really get out of control and have kind of a lot of points of conflict. But since a school, before the school starts, you go out there and they have their traffic plan and they provide the parents with how everything's going to flow, they put their crossing guards in the correct place. So now it's more of a controlled traffic, police, traffic monitors to handle that type of traffic flow. So I believe that that's how the schools have gotten these projects approved because they're, they have control with what's going on in their entrance. Here, it just so happens that the street's coming after the fact, but the street is pretty much the monument first and then the driveways come after. So it's just one of those that, yes, we would try to avoid it. In this case, it's a school, it's their prototype, they've done it in other sites. And they, their reasoning is they can control that traffic with traffic monitors.
Let me add one last thing. One of the things that we started implementing in the city to avoid accidents is the one-way flow during school hour. So what might happen here is that we might in the future have to make a one-way. Although, it is very hard to make one-way on big collectors like EG Ranch. We avoid doing that. We haven't done one-way in big collectors. Being that this is a big collector, it would be hard to implement a one-way like we do in minor streets where other schools are. So that's why we're catching right now the problem. We're trying to catch right now the problem that we have seen in the past.
I think Ricardo Villarreal mentioned that one of the biggest problems usually when you have conflicts like that is because there are no one guiding traffic. In this case, peak periods of the school, you're going to have crossing guards or whatever.
They're column stables, or the UICBD.
To, you know, control the traffic flows, and there's really going to be two peak periods. It's going to be in the morning and in the afternoon release. I don't believe that there should be a problem. Like I said, the way I see this, if the future, if they do see that the driveways are too close, my guess is that they're going to probably exit out of Farmer, because it's again a right, you just give it a little bit more spacing and it should work. But with people controlling traffic, I don't see a conflict, to be honest with you, at this point.
And there is a mechanism, Mr. Chairman, of the traffic department, if they do see conflicts, kind of like TechDOT has that as well. If they see conflicts in the future with an existing driveway, they have, you know, the ability to go to the owners and say, hey, we're going to move your driveway, or we're going to readjust it, we're going to readjust traffic patterns. You know, in this case, it's going to take a lot more logistical effort here because you're dealing with so many other things. But that option is there, and that's why that road was wanted there for that specific reason.
And I think that's exactly why that school district, you know, wanted that option there just in case they needed to do something. That's my personal opinion of that, so. Anybody else from the commission have any questions? On this particular item on traffic? No? So, okay, go ahead, Mr. Villarreal, thank you very much.
Thank you. The second one, I think that one was going to take that long, but the second one was, the, give a little bit of history real quick, a little quick, one-minute history on this. This project, you probably recognize in the previous three months where we've been going back and forth on what the plan should be in this area. So the original, the one that I have up here is the original when it was first submitted back before April. And so we submitted this project kind of the way you see it submitted right now. Within these comments, it was asked to extend EG Ranch and wrap around to Grassway Road, which, and to provide the half-road improvements to go down. So we went ahead and agreed to that comment. And when we got into the running of actually designing, taking topography, getting all the necessary information to go forward with existing design, EG Ranch Road is a 59-foot back-to-back road. And towards the southern tip of it, it comes down to 52-foot back-to-back. So the reason for that is when the school's platted, they made their portion a little bit wider. But it was originally always a 52-back-to-back road. So when we started designing the half a road, it ended up being 26-foot wide as far as a half a road.
Let me ask you real quick, for the commission's sake, you're talking about a half a road. Explain to the commission why you're talking about a half a road.
The reason is because usually when you abut to another landowner and you pretty much share in the cost of an improvement, in this case, a roadway, it could be for infrastructure, it's not really for just a street, for infrastructure, water, sewer. One half of the landowner is responsible for half of the improvements and the other landowner is responsible for the other half. However, the way it's done is what's in the gray area in the code book. Because a lot of times, if you have a local road that's 31-back-to-back and to build half a local road, it really doesn't make sense. 15 and a half or 15-foot roadway doesn't make sense. Now, if you're building a McPherson-type road, which is 65, and you're going to go 32, well, 32, you can manage traffic two ways. So I think it was mainly put in there to use it as a mechanism to bring in these bigger roads like, for instance, I don't know if all of y'all remember, Shiloh. Shiloh was connected from I-35 to McPherson at a 33-foot width. That was done because you were connecting two roadways and you needed to get traffic out. And so in that case, the roadway is so large that you can build half a road and it's still functionable. And you're connecting two points of ingress and egress. In this case, we're in the same boat here in the sense that there's a different landowner. Now, EG Ranch is in a completely different piece of property. However, there is an access easement there. So when we came originally with the preliminary plat, it was stated, can you put your portion of the road? So we went back, we looked at it, we started designing it. When we started getting into design, it ended up being a 26-foot road. Now, 26-foot road is not really that functionable. And number one, it's not that functionable because if you look at the master plan, which we are looking to build, this is Phase 1 here. And if we put half a road, this suburban collector that comes in, that's going to be built at its full ultimate stage. So when we come with the next phase, and we come with the next phase, you're going to have two major roads that are going to be connected by a chute, a shorter or a narrower piece of roadway. So as we were discussing, we were discussing with the client, we came to the conclusion then, and this is the solution for this scenario. Instead of building our responsibility of half a road, or in theory, half a road all the way along our frontage, let us build the entire width of the road halfway down. So that way, you get the full width of the road, right? Now, it's halfway down, what that happens is, the reason you also want to do that is because the other side, they're not developing right now, so we don't know when we're going to get the other half. It could be two years, five years, it could be 10 years, it could even be more than that. So that's speculation, which is hard to do. We know we're coming in, you can see it based on the project. Also, to build the full road halfway through, it gets beyond our suburban collector. So as we keep on going, both roads are connected now by a more efficient system. All the roads are built to ultimate, ultimate width. The only thing was that we asked was, we asked, will agree to that if we can defer those improvements to the next residential phase? And that's when, so between the first preliminary approval and then the preliminary reconsideration, within that time, when we started to get into design, and we were in design when we started figuring out, hey, this isn't going to be as good as what we want it to be for the community and for the developer. This is his main entrance. So last thing we want is people to come in into a chute to get into the main entrance of the subdivision. So we proposed a plan to staff to build half the road halfway, I mean, the full road halfway down our frontage. But if we can put those improvements in the second phase when it's actually needed. Now, the reason we took it off as well is, let me go back to the plat that was submitted here. Now, this is a 149-lot development with a 5-acre multifamily tract. We're already building a local collector next to the school. This local collector is 41-back-to-back. In comparison, you're looking at a country club drive road that doesn't have any lots fronting other than the multifamily, just like that road does. And so one of the concerns was, can that road handle the amount of traffic? Well, a local collector to this magnitude that can have two lanes and a turning lane, based off of the IT on average, it can handle about 18,000 cars, average daily traffic. It can eh it can handle about eighteen thousand cars, average daily traffic. This subdivision is estimated to generate about two thousand. So, that local collector that's already been proposed in the first phase can handle the traffic. The next issue was, do we need this for a secondary access at this point? Um, we did meet with the fire department. Um, the fire department's code is not. Is more, well, ob- obviously they follow the rate of land development code and subdivision ordinance, but they also follow the uh. The international fire code, which in section D one oh seven. Once you get past a design of thirty lots. You need to propose a second access to tie into future development. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to tie it in right now. It just means that, once you get past thirty lots, you need to start figuring out that in the future, it's gonna have to have a second access. So when we go back to our development. We originally had a cul-de-sac here, we're opening it up here. Actually, let me get back to the master plan, it'll be a lot easier to see. Which the comments in the master plan for fire were addressed in the master plan. So there'll be another access on the northern northern end. There'll be an access here to the suburban collector, there'll be one here, and of course, the local collector that will build it now. So within this hundred and forty-nine lots, we're providing four entrances and exits off of this off of this subdivision.
Now, that future road, are you already, like, are you gonna clear it out and connect it out to what EG Road?
This one here?
No, the other one.
Uh, suburban collector?
Secondary.
It'll be cleared out from Grassway to EG Ranch.
Okay.
Um, and it'll be cleared out for the reason that we have to tie in a water line to loop our water line system. And if you look at the aerial of the project, you can see the school. There, there's an existing eighteen-inch water line that runs south of EG Ranch, and then it cuts west. So you can see that there's already a path there. This is the area here where we're gonna tie into. So we're gonna clear a little bit more here to tie in the water line. So in essence, you're gonna have a clearing. Now, when we met with fire to see if they needed this road, they stated that they didn't need the road. However, they were concerned with the secondary access. Because if you can get a secondary access, it's great. So we went ahead, they're requesting uh an all-weather road. Um. Down EG Ranch to connect to Grassway routes and which we've we've uh we've agreed to on that all-weather road. Um, it's gonna follow the ranch road, and it's also gonna follow the water line that's existing there. So they'll. Eh I know there's a concern if uh something happens within the subdivision in. In here, they'll have an access around, an emergency access around there. It won't be technically a public access. Um, because it won't be a blacktop, it won't be dedicated to the city, but there'll be an off-site. Access uti- there's already a utility and access easement there, and they'll be, it's just gonna be mirrored again for the fire department. Um, so on this comment, I know the comment states that we wanna eh if we can revert back to the original one where we build half a road. And we just don't think it's as efficient as this plan. We know it's the first phase. First phase is on big developments, usually takes something like this to get going. You eh there's multiple examples around town. Alexander, Winfield, you know, Lakeside. They all had way, way more than three hundred, four hundred lots before they even had a second access, you know? And so here, we're planning on providing this road here and the second access in the in the next phase. You know, so we don't, we're we're not gonna have to wait till phase five, phase six. That's our plan for this one. There is a comment in the in in the master plan to re-phase the the subdivisions, which we're obliging to that. Phase two will stay the park because that's required, so phase three will change to this area south of that. So that means that we'll have to extend EG Ranch at its full width to get to this uh to get to this section. So, eh so if I may, so at this point, what you're proposing is to do an all-weather road? At this point, to connect to the second access and then in the next residential phase do a to to finish that road? Finish it, uh uh fifty-two back-to-back what it what it has to be, as opposed to twenty-six. That is approved right now on the last reconsideration.
But you do that at the opening of the next residential phase?
Yes, that's the plan, to do it on the on the next one.
Put it for the next phase, your next phase is your parking.
Eh eh yes, the next resident, eh it had to be residential, the park, we have to dedicate the park and provide uh access to the park. Um, you know, offside access, so we can do that. I mean, ideally, uh I'm gonna go ahead and sit here and think positive. Cause I guess we all should think positive, right? So, we're gonna follow phase three, which is a hundred and fifty-three lots. So that road would be built all the way to the park, you know, so that's that's the way it's planned now. Now, I can't control economics, I can't control any of that, but. If we're seeing the trend that we've been seeing the last three, four years where people are waiting outside this door for lots to open up. That's really a possibility. This this project that we see here, this phase one will probably be completed in. The next year, year and a half on the ground with the next phase starting, you know, a couple of months after that.
But if you don't sell lots and you're stuck at forty, you don't even need a secondary access.
Yeah, if if we're, even if we just complete phase one, not until we do a next one is when the other road is needed. It's. It's not a, it's a necessity for the entire development, but it's not needed for this phase. And that's what we're trying to convey here. And I know I've met with fire um on that, I know maybe there might be some confirmation.
Let me call the marshal up, please.
Andres Jimenez, Fire Department.
Marshal, uh, hundred and forty lots, I think it is? Uh, one forty-nine. Uh, your requirement under the fire code is to have. Multiple or at least minimum of two entrances and exits for development?
Yes, sir, for thirty.
Over thirty lots?
If it's a dead end with only one way, for over thirty, you need two. But like he said earlier, with the exception. Which is number two, exception number two, if you have a future, which they're showing us on the master plan, there's gonna be future ways in and out. So they're using this exception where they can go up to one thirty, one forty.
And the the document that you're showing up there uh is from what code book or what?
This is a fire code.
Fire code?
Yes, sir, it's a it's a fire code appendix D, which is is part of the fire.
So the fire code, the way it reads right now, says if you're gonna have. And and I can see the rationale, obviously, in the future, you're gonna have streets. I guess my concern right now is, we're gonna take off with a hundred and forty-nine lots. And let's say it takes off like wildfire, and let's say Farmer Road has a problem and there's no way out. How do you get the people out?
Well, we would, we would like the second way in, but again, if you do have a problem, we're gonna talk about what is. If you have a problem on EG Ranch Road, it's still a one-way in, so I mean.
I mean, yeah, we can do a lot of what is, I agree, I'm just asking you a hypothetical question. Now, right now, the mention was that we're gonna have a secondary exit for fire only, which is a Calicha Road.
Yes, sir.
That is, what's the width, Rick?
It's it'll be based off the fire code, it'll be twenty foot wide.
Minimum.
Minimum.
Okay, now, is that road gonna be gated? Or is it gonna be allowed to be used by anyone in that subdivision or or what?
The way our code reads, it could be gated, as long as they make it easy for us to get in, which is a padlock or or. A chain that we're able to cut with our bolt cutters on the fire truck.
Okay, so under the fire code right now, uh, I guess you've kinda discussed that a Calicha Road would work as your. Your secondary or whatever.
Here's a specs, uh longest, it it could be. Concrete asphalt or. An all-weather driving uh road that could withstand seventy-five thousand pounds, which is, or heavy trucks. Which that where they would come in with.
Code allows that, okay. So your fire code allows that particular?
And we designed the thickness based off of that seventy-five thousand pound.
Sure. Okay, let me ask you a hypothetical question, Rick, as an engineer.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, as the street comes in in the future, um. Putting Calicha down and all-weather road and, you know, making it seventy-five thousand pounds, heavy, heavy-duty type standards. How, I guess, and and this is just like I said, a question, I don't know. How much more expensive would it be to blacktop that and just have a functional in and out?
I. I know what I, I do have a number. I don't like getting into numbers because it's it's it should be about a safety thing, right? But we we've estimated that road to be at a full width to get it the way it was previously approved, the full width, half a million dollars.
The now the full width is the full width of EG.
Fifty-two, fifty-two back-to-back with blacktop curb and at the typical section that the city requires.
Yeah.
So right now, we would only have to design for an all-weather road that's seventy-five thousand pounds. In this second case, it would have to be full-blown city code, curb and gutter, um, base. Uh, it would have to be uh the uh surface, the riding surface. Um, so it it carries a. A lot more parameters that really make this more expensive. Also, in this area here. Where this, where we're creating this ditch, it's a crossing that's gonna require a big uh covert. Um, and that also is is eh increases the price. That that's why. It's really only about eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred feet in total length, but that covert, I believe we preliminary sized it at two six-by-three boxes. If my mind serves me correctly.
Is that where that lake was in the aerial shot that you were showing?
There's one lake, there's one lake here, and yes, that lake is a little bit further out here.
Yeah, so you're still gonna put a covert box in there for that Calicha Road?
On- once the road comes in, we're gonna have to put it.
For the.
Yeah, but there we can put a a a smaller temporary covert as opposed to a.
A full-blown. Four by six, six by six, whatever.
Okay.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I I have a question um for the fire department.
Um, marshal?
Yes, sir.
So, in other words, you are, you will be approving. If they go with an all-weather road, you will be good with that, you would be waving that uh.
Well, in reality, sir, that those comments are not coming from the fire department, cause they are complying with with our code. They are complying with it, but if they're gonna re- if they're gonna build it, we're we're in favor of it. But we're not, we're not telling them not to do it because they are complying already, because in the future, they're showing ways in and out.
The reason I'm asking, uh, Mr. Marshal, is that uh, we're creating a precedent here. If uh, if we agreed that we're gonna go ahead and allow the uh the all-weather road, then. My direct question is this, that fire department does not have a problem with an all-weather road.
We never.
As long as we have two accesses, am I correct?
No, you're welcome. Yes, I'm sorry, my name is Victor Lopez, uh, I'm the one that reviews the plat for the fire department. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm addressing you and the and the commission. Um, when we reviewed originally on the preliminary phase and everything. That was the first thing that I looked at the master plan. The way the code reads, the international fire code, which was adopted. By the city of Laredo back in twenty twelve, um, it does allow, as long as it shows. Future, eh the future streets to connect elsewhere, to have more access. Okay, so for, when we have reviewed the plat, including phase one, that's why I I retracted my comment. On the second, second time, uh, and they did correct it. If you look at this one here, that was one of my comments. That particular phase, it didn't meet the requirements that we were adding. So we, when when I asked them, they went ahead and added that, so that's a change for the future, okay? This one, another comment that I had was the uh the width of the cul-de-sac. Well, once we reviewed closer on the cul-de-sac, because it was showing fifty, well. As long as on the cul-de-sac is that that particular section of the street is no longer than a hundred and fifty, it's allowed at fifty. Now, I don't speak for uh the engineering department. If they have to be sixty, well, it'll be sixty, but as far as us are concerned, that'll be enough for us. Cause we can't force something that is not on the code book. Now, as far as the development, those exits are there. So we're not setting a set precedence. We are looking at everything the way we should.
So, two accesses are good.
Yeah, oh, we we'd love if if both exits during phase one, uh, the way uh the planning department was requesting it. But if we at least, for the emergency access road to be an all-weather road gated with lots. Only for use specifically as an emergency access road, we're good with that.
Okay.
Okay, so, but it was never, it was never uh that it was uh overlooked. Because we are looking at those things very closely. And including other master plans that came a long time ago, s- we try to see if we can change it. You know, there's only so much we can do, because one of the things that they can do, it can just come back, what was the code at that time? We are looking at the code, this is a brand-new uh master plan that's coming in, and we are looking at all those things.
Okay, okay.
Wait, let me ask you a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The the fire code that we're under right now is which code?
It's International Fire Code twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That one is revised every three years. We haven't adopted the twenty fifteen yet, so we're still working under the twenty twelve.
And the eighteen is out.
I know.
So we're like way behind here, I mean.
Yeah, we're not.
We're trying to catch up, sir.
Yes, yeah, they're 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 reviewing everything, Chief Dominguez and the marshal, they review everything, see, and then, of course, they bring it up to the city and everything. But for now, we're working under the twenty twelve.
Now, that's that's what the adopted code is, and that's the chapter go by. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Now, if if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Bradley. What they're proposing, is that, is that feasible, is that good for uh? Or are we missing any ordinances there as far as the uh as the a- as the access roads to the second? Do you have, you have a comment that?
Yeah, a couple of things, yeah. Uh, first of all, um, if you're gonna design subdivisions. Based upon the fire code. When what you're talking about is emergencies and life safety and not talking about the quality of life, mobility, traffic. Uh, of the residents in that area, then, you know, that's up to you all. But a second entrance there, absolutely needed. If there's an accident there, how are the folks gonna get out? They're gonna use that fire road? I don't think so.
They can.
They're gonna, they can, but they're not supposed to, it's not a public right-of-way. So they're gonna take their cars over the Calicha to get out, because there's an accident on Farmer's Road at that intersection. And all one hundred and forty-nine of those people can't get out because they're waiting for for a response.
But Nathan, they're stuck if there's an accident on EG Road period, there's one.
Yeah, but EG Road is a much wider road.
If there's an.
It's a much wider road that they can go around, sir.
There there is no other.
Here, there's no other way for them to get out. And and on any road, I mean, it's true, you have a huge accident, I mean, look at I thirty-five, it's gonna get blocked, right? But most of the time, you go around it. Here, you 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 mess up that intersection. And that strip there, nobody's getting out unless they use that fire access road. It's not fair to the residents, number one. Number two. It's true, we've had this happen before in other subdivisions. And we have learned over time that it's a problem for the residents and for 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 fire and for everybody else. Not to have paved entrances going into their subdivisions, at least two. We've learned that. So you can turn back the clock, and we can continue to make the same mistakes over and over. Look at Concord Hills, what's happening over there? You don't have enough connectivity? Got a huge problem, he was just here a couple of weeks ago talking about that Concord Hills and there's no road and we need a road and all this stuff. Well, the developers didn't put the roads in, and the commission didn't ask them to put the roads in. And now we're stuck with a problem where these folks have got only one way of getting in and one way of getting out, they've got no other access. And that's what we're we're perpetuating, we're keep doing it. We asked that he take that road down to that one intersection, so those one hundred and forty line line nine lots. Would have an additional way out. That's all we're we're asking. Now, the stuff about the half road. Code says half-street shall be prohibited. When I talk about a half-street, I mean a half of the street length, not a half-road. Okay, but you can do half-roads, I mean, under certain circumstances, the code provides for it. But you gotta go through and you gotta sift that out. So, yeah, I'm complete agreement with him that he needs to build that road all the way down to halfway. The full length. And I think he needs to turn it in and he needs to have that second access to that subdivision. I mean, it it's just the safest way. It also ensures the city that it's there. If development stops, those folks aren't aren't frustrated in the future that they never got that extra access that's being promised. We've seen that happen, or they're gonna get it in two years or three years, or, don't worry, we'll get it in a while. No, they can put it in right now. So that these folks can get in and out, have two ways in and out.
I I do agree, I I do agree that we've been progressing, um, for the example of Concord Hills. Concord Hills, when it was developed, it was developed in pockets, and the pockets didn't have a way out. So where we're adjusting is in the master plan. We're not adjusting in the phasing and to get development up and going. We're de- we're adjusting in the master plan. If I were to compare this master plan to Concord Hills. This whole one thousand and sixty-nine lot development wouldn't have another route. Here, our suburban collector is the next east-west road that's gonna parallel three fifty-nine. So, as development continues, that road's gonna continue. So you're not gonna have the Concord Hills um issue anymore. Plus, we have multiple points of ingress and egress throughout our our entire subdivision to our neighbors. So, it's the responsibility also of of the neighbors to keep that going. So that's where we made an adjustment. In the evolution of the problems that we've had in Concord Hills. Concord Hills, you don't see an east-west collector. Concord Hills, you don't see an east-west collector, up until you get to Los Presidentes, which that's the next one planned. And Nathan's right, we're working on Los Presidentes right now, and we're working on a second access. But Concord Hills has over eight hundred lots, I'm not, I know about eight hundred lots, which is, you know, an incredible amount, and I do agree. Yes, we do not wanna get to that point, but we are planning in the master plan, which we included all the comments by planning. By the fire department, to add these roads that never end per se. We're not, I'm not developing a one, one thousand lot development, and have a cul-de-sac at the end of my collector, no, it's gonna go. The only thing is, progress in development, I wish I can do a thousand lots in one phase, and then we abide by our master plan. But I, you know, you'd still have our requirement, and then, as people come along, they do their requirement, they do our requirement. That's where we're evolving, that's where we're ahead of the game, in the planning, this is a very, very good master plan.
Mr. Chairman, this.
The, the actual, actually, my, my question was directed whether there's an ordinance that requires two entrances. If there's an ordinance that, uh, that would miss me here, we, by, uh, by definition, we cannot grant. An approval if we're missing an ordinance, so my actual question was, was there an ordinance?
There's not a specific ordinance that requires them to have two entrances. Other than the comprehensive plan, which is a resolution that asks for that connectivity, you do not have a specific ordinance. That I can point to that says that they must have a street connection. The, uh, fire code is an ordinance, and it does say you gotta have two entrances, okay? It just doesn't say they have to be dedicated public right-of-ways. What we're saying is, based on the comp plan, based on what we've seen, it needs to be a dedicated right-of-way, full-street. Um, so folks can get in and out. Now, I, I will, I will also point to the fact that this is an area where they're coming in with new development. There's no other developments around there, correct, other than the schools?
Correct.
And there's only one way in and out on EG Ranch, okay? So, that is, that is, that is a problem, right? Because you're gonna have all those folks stacking up when they get up to three fifty-nine. Why? Because there's no other development that is pushing up that way. But if you don't fix these problems when you can, they will remain problems for a long time. And we're saying, this is a reasonable solution for those folks. If the city planning commission and the city area is not gonna look after the future residents of that area, who is? You're gonna leave them to their own devices, and they're gonna be waiting, because we've seen it happen in the fa- in the past. It takes two years, three years to, to get to that next phase, in the meantime, those folks are sitting there waiting. That's what prompted us to move stuff up when it came to the park requirements and other things, and I think the commission should consider that as well. Okay, thank you.
So, if we leave, if we leave the original comment to where they had agreed to, um, finish the half-road from back to back. Is there a way to find, is there a way for it to find it serviceable?
I don't think there was a comment for them to do the half-road.
Yeah, we, we met with the staff and they requested the half-a-road. They requested half-a-road even with a stand-up curb in the middle, that's why we designed it the way it was.
You what, curb in the middle?
Yeah, stand-up curb that it could break away, so when the other guys, when the neighbors come, they just expand it. So, that, that was what was requested of us, as we got into design, it wasn't efficient. And so, that's, that, I'm here because my clients are here, and the last thing we want is, although an opinion has been made that. Maybe the care for the citizens is not in our priority, that's definitely in our priority. Um, this is about, I mean, we're trying to get citizens to come into the development, and, and purchase lots and live here. The park requirement is roughly five, six acres, they're donating over, over, close to thirty acres. And in, when everything is, is said and, and done, there's gonna be three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that are gonna be paid in park fee. That we hope that we come into agreement, that we put it in that park. So, this here is being mirrored like the other great parks in town. North Central Park, where you have trails, where you have ponds, where you have everything, that's what we're doing here. And my, and my client is wanting to put a good product out there. Now, necessity and kind of wanting something are two totally different things on the spectrum, and that's what we're trying to differentiate. Do we need it now? We don't. We're still gonna get put in, we're not here saying we never wanna put in the road. Is it needed now? No, the code doesn't need it now, fire department doesn't need it now, and we're trying to figure out, we've run preliminary traffic. Um, analysis on, on that local collector, that can handle the traffic, so we're just here. What other evidence do we have to provide to, to put that road in there?
I may, Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Yes, go ahead.
I know we're trying, but, uh, I'll be real, real quick on that, on my comment. I personally think that we need to build the road. I think, uh, that road needs to be completed all the way down, and not half a road, but the whole road. And, and it's not to bring a burden on the, on the development. Uh, I wanna mention that, uh, I know the owner very well, and, uh, but I still think that we need to look at the community. A certain way that, uh, that you're bringing the buyers into that, into that new subdivision. But I think they should be buying something that they for sure know that they're safe, and that they have all the infrastructure. That will not go away, or will come back in a couple of years, or five years, or two years, or ten years from now. I strongly believe that that road needs to be built before we approve, uh, the first phase. It should go with, with the first phase, not have a road, but the whole road, see? I, I think that's the best design, I think is the best for the people that are gonna buy there, the people that are gonna live there. Probably you're not gonna live there, I probably won't live there, probably the owner's not gonna live there. But I do care for the people that are gonna move in there, and we have a question as to whether the, uh, the, uh. That the people are gonna be safe, and I don't agree with the fire department, I really don't agree. I think the second access will be, uh, granted, and should be completely finished. And com- and, and access to the community, not with a gate, see? But actually with a true access in and out, see? And I'm sorry for that comment, uh, fire department, but that's, that's the way I feel. I'm here to represent the community, I might not have a friend tomorrow, but I'm here to represent the community. And not to side on, on, on something that I don't agree with, see? I don't agree with that plan, I think is very poorly, uh, set up before us. Build the road, let's have a second, a second entrance, and everybody's happy.
And, and.
And I wish, so, you talked about burden on, uh, on, on the project. All the projects have burdens. This might not be something that was looked over, but it's something that needs to be done, and I feel that it needs to be done on phase one. That's my comment.
And, and I will, I do wanna add three real quick, Chairman, is, there's a second factor here on, on the burden. I really didn't mention burden on, on my client, cause we're gonna get built it, it's gonna get built. Um, the, the one thing we wanna, don't want also, and we see it all the time, is we build roads to nowhere, where there's not a lot of traffic. And I wish there was a representative from Public Works Department here. And when you build a road that doesn't get used for a long time, and that doesn't have the amount of traffic that it should, it deteriorates a lot quicker. So then, now you start putting a burden on the city and maintenance. So now, my main entrance that wasn't used for two, three years is damaged because it was never used, and that's my main entrance. So we're also looking at the aspect of putting out a good product that's gonna last.
But you're, yeah, that's another statement. You get a road, you built it correct, and that road is gonna be there whether you use it or not. There's, you have a point, but that's not something that is gonna change my mind.
Okay, no, I just, I, I just wanted to make that point.
We, we built. Since nobody's mind's gonna be changed, I make a motion to approve the, the preliminary plat consideration. Subject to the following comments with the amendment of planning note number two. To stay, rather, continue EG Road and connect La Finca up to Grassway Drive. At the construction of the second resident, I guess, whatever's phase three.
The next residential phase.
The next residential phase, and then eliminate comment number three from the traffic safety, which has never appeared on any plat before.
Uh, Commissioner, I just wanted to mention that I had not finished. And I had the floor, see, and, and, and that's something that, uh, that, that discussion was not closed yet. And you're making a motion on something that I have the floor on, see? So, I wanna make a point, Mr. Chairman, that that shouldn't happen here.
All right, point well taken. Any other comments from anybody, before we go on with this motion? We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those against? Aye?
Aye.
Three, let me take a count. One, the ayes please, one, two, aye? I'm sorry?
Four.
Yes, one, two, three, four. The nays are three. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next edit that we have is the capital improvements plan.
I asked to be excused, I wanted to stay, but my son has a baseball game that started an hour ago. I would love to have hung out for this part.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, con- commissioners, Gilberto Sanchez for the record, acting budget director. At the CIP presentation right here. If I just can get it going, oh, here it is. Okay, this is the CIP program that is gonna be presented at the budget workshop, uh, it's just a plan, it's nothing finalized. There's, has been no, no decision made on the projects that are, that are required for a capital. For a CO, uh, just the ones from the enterprise funds, and I'll get to that in just a little bit. So you, might be a different from the one that we submitted to you, we have made changes, I'll go through those changes in the next, next few slides. So the new, uh, proposed amount is two hundred and twenty-two million for eight, for next year. And we have two oh eight for twenty, for twenty-one seventy-five, for twenty-two forty-five. And for twenty-three six oh nine million dollars. Now getting to the details of the project for now. This, these were the changes and the amendments we're gonna propose in the next council meeting, uh, these are changes to the. That we done, that we identified, the, the, the different funding sources were wrong. Uh, we're just moving, uh, to correct the, the funding sources, so there's no real impact on the one that we submitted that you should all have gotten. Uh, last week. And the next one, do, they do have an impact to the CIP, those were projects that were added, that were not included in the original one. Which is the I sixty-nine to I thirty-five, with a total cost of two hundred and fifty for next year. And Killam Turning Lanes for one point seven million, Cuatro Vientos Concord Hills, one point five. Valle Cillo Road, five point two million, Springfield Avenue Extension, three hundred and five. A Char Rutinger for four point nine million, and W C D D Road for a hundred and seventy-seven. There was also a deletion for the police vehicle tactical units, those were acquired last year. And this current year, as we were advised on, from police department, so we, we took them off, on the original CIP that we submitted to you all. So this is the distribution we have from the CIP, right now, you're here, you can see clearly where, uh, the funding sources will be from all the, all the proposed. Uh, uh, C, uh, capital improvement projects that are out there. So the majority of it is from bonds, a hundred and fourteen million dollars there. And we have grants, we have the SIB loans, uh, system revenues, contribution from developers. At the sports venue tax to contribute into some projects, and the tax, uh, in, in. Investment, reinvestment zone to, uh, for a project there. The top five largest departments, uh, with needs on the CIP, the first one will be utilities, followed by airport. Uh, the biggest one on the airport will be the forty-five million dollar, uh, hangar for the DHS headquarters that they're proposing. It's a ongoing project, nothing's being finalized, but it's there. Uh, next will be parks, uh, we have the convention center there on park, under parks. Then transit and general government so far. We move back, uh, for the funding sources, it's just the same that I showed you just in, uh, a different format, uh, have a grants. Totally in twenty-one million dollars, and system revenues, eight million dollars. A T W D B loan, forty-eight million dollars, that's, uh, for Manada's Great, I believe, utilities. SIP loan, ten point six million dollars, contribution from developers for four point four. Sports venue tax, uh, five point five, and the tiers, ten million dollars. Okay, the unfunded CEOs, that's where, uh, the council members, you all can recommend something. That's eighty-three million dollars that we have in projects out there, and request that. There's currently, uh, no funding source right now identified so far. And, uh, right now, we're on the process of getting with the, with our financial consultant. I believe there's, there's a window of issuing debt, it will be around ten million dollars, ten million, ten million, or ten to eleven million, or something like that. So it'll be a matter of prioritizing the needs of the city for those eighty-three millions of dollars out there. The rest, utilities, solid waste and environmental are, are self-sustained, so pretty much they can issue, uh, that debt. And can carry on with their projects.
So, let me ask you.
Sure.
Utility, solid waste and environmental, they're enterprise funds.
Correct.
And right now, they're proposing to issue out that kinda debt, like utilities twenty-six million?
Well, utilities has those, uh, those, uh, requests right now, but they, the latest that I heard from them. They can issue only five, which will be for equipment, and they can, uh, move for later years their remaining projects. It's, uh, it's based on needs that they have right now, but if you're talking about capacity, they do have the capacity to issue that.
Up to five million?
Up, up, up to twenty-six, they can.
Oh, they can do twenty-six now?
They can do that.
To issue twenty-six million dollars in debt for utilities. We had an ordinance that was passed some years ago, that was an increase in the revenue, I mean, in the, um, in the fees.
Yes.
For, I think it was twenty-five years, is that correct?
I don't have the exact date here, but yeah, it's gonna go until twenty twenty-six.
Basically, what we're doing here is, we're saying, hey, we can issue you debt, because we're gonna keep increasing. You know, the cost of the utilities to the residents. I mean, that's what, that's what's going on here, but I think what we need to do is, we need to look at, hey, enough is enough, you know, in terms of stuff going up. And I think we need to start looking at, okay, is the utilities department solvent enough right now? Because they've had a lot of big projects, we've got the, the plant, water plant that we did off of, uh, Mines Road area. That doesn't have an area of service yet, it's a minimal area. So I don't believe that plan is paying for itself with what it was proposed. So how is that being subsidized? And maybe I'm asking the wrong, I'm sorry.
Um, good evening, Martin Aleman, for the record, executive director of finance and IT, overseeing, uh, budget and oversee your utilities. Uh, you're right, as far as the ordinance, and obviously, the ordinance was done because this is only a portion of every, all the needs the utilities has. Utilities has its own, uh, CIP, which includes various projects. And obviously, there's a lot of growth, the water system is the one that's a little bit more solvent, the one that's currently somewhat in a tighter position to sewer. Currently, right now, what we're doing is we hired a consultant to do a rate study, and compare it to the needs of the system, so that we can see. Exactly how much we can afford, based on the ordinance that we have in place, based on what you said. We do not have necessarily excess funding. As an example, there's two pro- there, there's, uh, one more project out of these twenty-six that's not here right now, and that's the forty-eight million dollar. Uh, wastewater treatment plan in Man, in Manada, so if we were to do the twenty-six and the forty-eight, we probably wouldn't have the capacity.
Let me ask you something real quick, the twenty-six million dollars for utilities, what, what is in that? What is proposed?
We'll go back to those slides in a little bit.
Those, those are the listing of the different projects that we have, the utilities. Right now, what we're looking at is, we're probably definitely gonna address the one that's titled Equipment Various for five million dollars. The rest, we're gonna be really analyzed to see, uh, which are important and a must in order to continue with the demands of, of the system. Uh, the other thing that I, I can mention too, and as to why we're also holding on, uh, we are currently on a study by Honeywell to look at the Sakat, uh, the Sakate wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we are being told that, that plant can be re- retrofit, kinda like what we did in the north, south, uh, north side wastewater plant, Anshilo, which, uh, was, I mean, I remember back then, I live in that area, you used to really smell.
Sewer plant.
Well, they went ahead and, and revamped it, you basically can't smell it anymore. Well, because of this technology, they're, Honeywell's doing a study and they're, they're saying we can probably retrofit, uh, that, that plant, and in, and instead of having to spend forty-eight million dollars on a new plant on mine road, we can go ahead and retrofit this one for maybe half or less of the amount of the forty-eight million dollars. So right now, it's a point, turning point for utilities, there's a lot of things that are being looked at and analyzed, including the rate studies and the projects and where the demands are in order that, that funding that we have because of the ordinance is in place. And obviously, we don't wanna certainly increase rates, but we're gonna have to make a decision based on the demand of the system, you know, how much capacity do we have? What's the future demand, the south is really, uh, growing, so like I mentioned, the demand right now is more on the sewer than on the water side. So we will be looking at, at, at the system a little bit closer and the capacity that it has, and that's why we're, we're doing various things, we're doing the rate studies indicated. We're also doing a study on our own meters to make sure that they're all, uh, working accordingly, especially the big ones, to make sure that all the revenues are being captured and, and so forth, in order to make sure that the accountability is, is being done properly. And obviously, we don't wanna increase the rate, but we're looking at that possibility too, based on the demands of the systems.
Thank you.
I just had a comment real quick, Mr. Sherman. I, uh, members like me, they have, have contacted me and, and they, they tell me that they see a lot of, uh, equipment, old equipment, uh, on the backyard of utilities that are not being either used or sold. What's, uh, and, and we, I, I see that we got five million for new equipment, what is that, uh, what's going on there? I mean, is it equipment that is gonna be sold, do you have an answer for that?
Uh, I, I don't really, I, I know I've seen some of that equipment, but I can't, I can't give you specifics, I, I don't know specifically what's in there. I do know that every year, we do inventory with all the different equipments, whatever's already been sitting there for a while, that it's already, it's solvage pretty much because it's over, over its useful life. We do, uh, have hold an auction citywide and sell all that, uh, extra equipment that, that, that we have. Right now, utilities is also, uh, looking at that facility to revamp, uh, revamp it and do an expansion. Uh, so that's part of what we're looking to with, with the administration of that building that's located at the airport, uh, base next to the park and right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Going back to where we left off, this is the unfunded CO projects that will, will need to make a decision with, uh, during the budget workshop, will be presented. I don't know if we wanted to go through all of them, but this is pretty much the list, there are around seventy-two, eighty projects out there.
I'm sorry, how many projects did you say?
Around seventy-two.
That are unfunded?
Eighty project. Yeah, well, that, we have to decide which one are the priority for the city and the ones that make it.
How much money do you have to make a decision on all these projects?
Well, calculating that, we have, we'll have around ten to twelve million dollars to issue for this.
And how much are these unfunded projects, what are they totaled to?
They totaled to eighty-three million dollars.
Okay, well, you, you do have a job on your hands, sir.
Well, I was expecting for you to help me out with this one, but.
Well, I can, let me tell you. No, go ahead.
So these are the main ones that we have, well, not the main ones, all the, made up the eighty-two million dollars that we have there, we have, uh, from traffic, uh, and like I said, one of the main ones will be the forty-five million dollar, uh, project that we have here, that's for the airport. This is an ongoing project right now, and that's just preliminary numbers. Uh, we really don't know what's gonna happen there, but, uh, I mean, we have it there.
The, the, uh, on one of those unfunded projects, I think, the McPearson International, what, what is that?
The turning lanes, like the, like the ones you have on, uh.
So does that include what, acquisition or what?
It should, it should be.
Has anybody ever looked at, you know, a mobility plan where we can take an existing street and just put, you know, flyovers instead of having to make this?
Well, that's.
I mean, the design speed of a new bridge structure doesn't have to be at highway standards. These are streets that can be designed at thirty-five or forty, that we can use the existing right of way, and for people who are just, you know, say traveling north or south, they can utilize structures like that. Has that ever been looked at?
I will need to get back to you with that answer, that's a question that I will have to ask my, our traffic department, yes.
But I, I, I'm just throwing it out there because I think it's something that, you know, I, I see a lot of unfunded projects, but really, our, our issues in Laredo are mobility.
Yes.
And because here are mobility, we have to start thinking out of the box. Buying right of way, let's say now, McPearson is, you know, cost prohibitive, but if you can take the existing right of way and say, okay, if you're gonna go over Delmar, over International, blah, 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 and you just do some, you know, very simple bridge structures that can be utilized at low rates of speed, that may solve a lot of mobility issues. Given that, that's one of the, well, between thirty-five and the loop, we only have one north and south connection. So I think our focus should really go into looking at, how do you take, and if you go to California, you'll see that everywhere. California runs expressways where you have traffic going one way, and the top layer is going the opposite way, utilizing the same footprint. I think it's something we, at this community, need to start looking at, because we don't have any more room, but we need more capacity. And so, I don't see any of that in there. Just a comment that I think you should take back.
Okay, we will do, sir. This continuation of projects, I see all traffic signals, traffic signals, LED lights, something, yeah. I'm looking to, uh, new PD annex building. And here, we already saw this one, is the utilities, uh, request for twenty-six million. This is for solid waste, this is just equipment that they have, they just have a, a schedule for being replacing equipment every year.
Let me ask you, on, on solid waste, uh, the equipment replaced, is solid wa, solid, solid waste is an enterprise fund?
Correct.
Is it a solvent fund?
Correct, yes.
So then they do have capacity to issue debt?
Yes.
Without increasing the fees?
Yes.
How much capacity, do you know?
I don't know, I don't have the answer right now.
Okay, thank you.
That answer to you. Environmental, a hundred and forty, that's the ponderosa drainage improvement. And this is just pictures of the projects that are, that are being requested, that's the shades for parks. This is just where the facility for the airport is proposed to be constructed.
This, let me, I'm sorry to keep interrupting you, this forty-five million dollar facility?
Yes.
Is gonna be funded strictly by the, by the city?
Well, it's.
Or is it a partnership?
It's, uh, we're looking, it's in preliminary stage right now, it's, uh, it will be a partnership between the city and, uh, home, and, uh, Homeland Security Administration or the GSA, which is the one that, uh, that administers all the federal buildings.
So, the majority of the funding would come from the federal government, is that correct? Is that an accurate statement?
It's in preliminary stage, like I said.
Martin Aleman for the record, uh, it's in discussions, I mean, there's been several options, one of the ones that we cannot, I've heard a couple, and hopefully it'd be something like that, is that they will lease the property from us, so with, if we were to get a contract, as an example, with DHS, and, uh, we've heard amounts from three million to six million dollars annually, true or not true, again, it's preliminary discussions. The intent is that we can fund it, there's also been the discussion, well, if a private individual comes in and develops it, and then they rent it and they pay only, uh, rent for the land. So things like that are being discussed, but, but basically, right now, since we're, we're not, we don't have a set plan, but they want, we wanted to show that and that there because it's something that's moving, it's been discussed with federal government, and hopefully i- it'll materialize. And I guess the other point is if we take that out of the eighty-three million dollars, that leaves us only really thirty-eight million dollars to work with, that we really need to make a decision on with the ten or twelve million dollars. I know it's not much, but at least it's one-third of the amount of the projects that are, it's out there as opposed to the eighty-three million, I just wanna make that, 'cause when you see the eighty-three million, it just looks so huge compared to the ten or twelve million, but this, this is one of the ones that inflates that, that, that number, so take that out, and really you're left with thirty-eight million dollars to be funded from anywhere between ten to twelve million dollars. And, and that's what we're gonna be discussing during the workshops between August the thirteenth and the fifteenth, this is gonna be one of the presentations. We're still doing some changes as indicated, and, uh, hopefully council can, can let us know which, which, which projects they will prioritize and fund with those, uh, ten or twelve million dollars that we, we'd be able to get.
Good.
Moving on, we got the police, uh, annex building for one million dollars, it's an ongoing project for now. The animal care has a nine hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar request for, uh, the adoption facility, the.
Sorry, let me interrupt you again, the, uh, police annex, these are all properties that were in the airport, is that in the airport?
Correct.
Now, the city of Laredo's paying the airport fund next number of dollars of grant every year?
Yeah, we're paying, uh.
Wouldn't it make more sense to move them out of the airport? Buy a piece of property, we can, a debt service and retire the debt?
Well, we're paying rent to the airport right now, this property, so we're planning to buy the land from the airport at this point, uh, that's the.
Is that the plan to buy it? Because, I mean, that would make a lot of sense, I mean, you have debt that you wanna retire.
Yes.
But not say, okay, I'm feeding one fund from another fund, 'cause that to me doesn't make any sense.
Yes, that's the, well, that's a, again, it's a preliminary number right now, preliminary stage, but that's, that's the plan right now to buy this piece of property from the airport.
So this one million dollars is for ac, it's acquisition of that per site, right?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Actually, it's for the acquisition of the building, so. Is this the Sanchez property, the one that was leased to Sanchez?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Animal care facility, so the need for the animal care facility. And the health department, those three are the needs for a total of almost a million dollars. Now we go to the capital outlay request from the, during the budget process, each department submits a capital outlay request. These are the requests that they were submitted. Again, these are also funded through either CEOs or system revenues. You see on your, on your right side, the funded ones, those were departments or funds that they had, uh, funds available, and they were, they were able to fund the, their requests with their own system revenues, which is, uh, community development, it was a, I believe, a car. Uh, IST will be the, it, it's the PAC fund, which, uh, the public access channel. Environmental for creek cleaning, uh, bridge fund for the, some match for the infra grant, uh, for the fast lane. And municipal housing, I believe it's a how, uh, vehicle too. And solid waste, they have, uh, a truck watch and several, another piece of equipment right there. On the other side, you have the departments that are basically more, the majority of them are general fund, so there's no actual system revenue to fund those, uh, capital library requests, so it will be part of the bond sale of the decision to be made on what to recommend. So you have municipal court, building, police, fire, those two being the most significant with four million and almost six million dollars for fire. Traffic, public works, another one of the big ones, parks, and have animal care, CBB, and airport. The total of this request is twenty-one million dollars, out of those twenty-one million, eight point six is already funded through system revenues.
Twenty-one million?
Twenty-one million is the total, and twelve is the, twelve is the amount that is not funded yet.
Okay, that's what, that's, that's what you're proposing to go out to?
Well, no, this is just the capital outlay request, again, this will be added to the, to the CIP that we just saw for thirty-something million.
Okay.
And we'll need to make a decision on what to fund for next year. This is the request, this is just a breakdown of what the department requests, municipal court had one generator in case the power, uh, power goes out. Building, uh, six trucks, traffic, that's trucks two, uh, parks has two vehicles. Uh, animal care, the washer and dryer, network server, and three vehicles. Combation and visitors bureau, cargo van, is the same as airport. And public works have a whole bunch of equipment here for, uh, that it totals, uh, two million dollars for public works. You can see all the equipment there, it's mostly automotive and backho, backhoes, sweepers, rollers, and so on. The fire department, that's another one of the big ones. The aerial truck for one point five million dollars and the ARF truck, one point two million dollars, those two being the big ones. And the breeding apparatus, the four seven forty, that's one of the important items that they were, they identify as one of the needs, as well as the fire engine for six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars there. Those just pictures of the equipment being requested, fire trucks and networking ambulances and monitors, almost four million dollars in requests from the fire department. And police, uh, basically, they just wanna replace fifty, fifty full hip with mark units, that's what makes the bulk of the requests for three million dollars. And that's basically all the requests we have, uh, I don't know if you have any more questions, any suggestions, any comments on the CIP?
Comments?
The only comment is, uh, I saw that the cost for some of the equipment, Mr. Sherman, and I know it's a utility trader for eleven thousand dollars. Where do they get the, uh, do they go on a, on a bidding basis, or it's just an estimate as to how they come up?
Well, there.
It's a quick answer.
Yeah, they're, they're supposed to get the, the, the number from the, from our purchasing department, we have, uh, what we call the buy boy bo, buy board board, and we get, we can get prices from there, so it should come from there.
Thank you.
It's a competitive price. And there, the, they might be changes by the time that it gets approved, so, but it should be somewhere with, between that amount.
Any other questions? I wanna thank you, it was an excellent presentation, very well done, very well put together, and I, I commend you for being very knowledgeable in, in your presentation. And I commend the rest of the staff that put it together, very well done, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you.
Moving right along, next item that we have is item nine B, the land development code. This is the amendment to the land development code, article four, section twenty-four point sixty-two zoning district and boundaries, to delete the title of B four zoning classification highway commercial district, and to adopt in lieu thereof a new title and text. Which new title is limited highway commercial district and creating a separate zoning district for the, uh, highway commercial district classification, adding a new title and text, which new title, B five, and text, which new title, B-five, uh, highway commercial district, providing for publication effective date. Background on this particular ordinance would be that the planning department finds intensive commercial uses may not be appropriate in all land currently zoned before. Discussion on separate zoning district from the current highway district, commercial district classification to remove the more intense use, and classify it under B-five district maps into a new B-five district. All right, we're ready to listen to this presentation.
Mr. Chairman, we just wanted to introduce this to the commission, and give you as much information as we could, the motivation behind acquiring a new district, or looking at a new district, is that, um, there are certain uses that are all lumped into the B-four that are more intense and maybe less desirable than many folks, um, want, and so by moving them into another district, the standard uses in the B-four, uh, can be more easily, uh, accessed, if you will. Uh, so for example, a lot of times when we're looking at, uh, a B-four zone for, you know, any of the B-four permitted uses, we also look at what is the, um, the result if they don't use it for that with expressed use, and instead they open up a bar, or something to that effect, and so then we'll, you know, kind of recommend against it, because, um, there's a, a fear that you'll introduce those types of uses into a neighborhood. So what we've done is we've split out from the B-four, some of those more intense uses, bars, muck eaters, outdoor storage of, uh, things, plant nurseries, and they're all listed there for you, so that you can see, um, which ones we're, we're focusing on. I should've listed them, but I didn't, and, uh. These, that are exclusive. Oh, outside display is one of them, um.
I thought, you talking about billboards or what?
No.
No.
Out, outside this, you know, uh.
Storage.
Outside storage.
I'm sorry, I missed, I didn't agree with you, I'm sorry.
Um, so you've got, uh, you know, confectionery store, used to be only allowed in M-one, we've moved it into the B-five, because that's a more intense use. Um, microbrewery, for example, um, that wasn't even allowed in any of the districts, we know how popular that's becoming, and this, um, and so we now put that in the, in the B-five, uh, zone, not in a B-four, because you can still get too close to residential with your B-four as well. Um, and there's not a whole bunch that we shifted over, but, um, I know that we did shift over the, uh.
At the farm.
Well, all, all of them, yeah. We shifted over, for example, on the first page, the plant nurseries that have outside storage into the B-five, um, farms, we took them out completely, uh, we don't think those belong in, in any commercial district, they should be in A-G. Um, hay grain and or feed sale stores, we put them into B-five, um, bulk grain, uh, and feed storage, uh, took them out of the B-four and put them in the B-five, um, a veterinary that has outdoor containment of the animals, we took that out of the B-four, put them into the B-five.
For the zoo.
Yeah, and just some cleanup or two, zoos, horse racing facilities, racetrack operations, B-five, because this is highway commercial, and that's usually where you're gonna find those kinds of operations. And again, I believe we put the bars, correct, in the B-five, and I think we put the, uh, amusement redemption machines in the B-five, um.
And halfway houses.
Halfway houses.
We have the miller's in this one.
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, it's not a whole bunch of stuff, but those are the ones that we're always having problems with, when we get a B-four, we start thinking, well, if we give this guy a B-four, then these things can happen there, and we're, you know, do a CUP instead to limit it and so forth, this way, they're already in the B-five, they can ask for the B-five zone, and we know exactly what's gonna go on there with these, these higher intense uses.
So, why are we, why, we, we wanna go to B-five, I mean, uh, I rate the ordinance, uh, and, uh, I don't see a point at all.
Okay.
A little bit after, what time do you have to be?
Actually, that's what we're bringing to you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner, I mean, you all are the ones that are gonna make the recommendation, or?
I'll be there in a week. I, I, I personally feel that there's no, uh, no need for a B-five myself, I think that we, we had a B-four, it's covered all the, uh, the angles, being a, on a B-five, you would have to, uh, we would probably have to bring all the B-fours that are existing, uh, to a B-five, uh, convert them into a B-five, because what are you gonna do with them? Uh, you might say, well, we might get B-fours, see, but what is existing along the highway and, uh, and people that are protected by the B-four right now, I think it would just be appropriate to bring them to a B-five, if it would ever happen, I, I personally think that, uh, that it uses to have B-five.
The, the way, the way that works, and whenever that does happen, and you create a new zoning district, basically, the businesses that should be in the B-five, or in the new B-five, that are in the B-four, will continue to operate, they become non-conforming uses, they're, they enjoy true grandfathering, uh, and nothing happens to them, unless, unless they close for more than six months, six months or more, in which case, they have an option, you know, they can either move their business to a B-five, or they can ask that that particular tract be converted to a B-five. But what happens is you get now an opportunity to see what is happening in that area, and whether or not that really is something that you want there, just like we do with our other zoning cases. Um, so we're creating that level, so that we have that separation, and we have that flexibility, if you will, to be able to say, you know, what, uh, this area, I don't think is, you know, is, is too close to residential, um, and these particular things that are now B-fives, which were in the B-four, you don't wanna give them the B-four, because you're afraid that's, you know, they will be, um, placed there or sited there, you, that's what the B-five does, it gives you that ability to, to, to say, well, it's, it's not a B-five use that they're looking for, it's a B-four, so it, it becomes more, um, sort of balanced. And, uh, we've looked at El Paso, we've looked at San Antonio, we've looked at also, those cities have a lot of different zoning char- you know, categories, we have very few, and we need this extra more intense use to put those other businesses over there, so we can be really careful with how they're, uh, located, and that's what our thinking is.
Please, real quick, Mr. Nervice, um, I think, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, we're looking at an ordinance that, uh, that the community needs to get involved, and, uh, and I think we, at, at least I think we should have some public hearing, wherein, uh, some of the members of the community, uh, come in and expose their concerns, because, uh, I actually rate the ordinance, to me, it doesn't make any sense, see, I, I think that, uh, having a B-four would be appropriate, of what we have is appropriate, maybe going to a B-five, something that we need to gather from the community, and see how they feel before us, that we represent in the community, make a decision on that, that is my comment, Mr. Nervice.
Uh, Commissioner Nervice?
So these B-five zoning, would they have necessarily, they have to be highway frontage in order for them to be zoned at B-five, or would they do a certain zone block gradients, radius from, or?
Well, uh, once again, zoning is a discretionary act of the city council, they can put a B-five or B-four, or an R-one, or whatever, an M-one, wherever they feel it's appropriate, irrespective of whether it's on a highway, or, you know, in the middle of a, a neighborhood. Um, the B-five is defined as, um, providing for those businesses and services serving a regional area, which are to be located primarily along major arterial streets or the freeway, um, and that's as classified by our transportation plan. It is intended for this zoning classification to exist primarily along principal arterial streets or the freeway, and to impose site development regulations to ensure adequate access to all users within this classification. So, to answer your question, the guidance and what we would go by is the fact that they need to be along the major arterials, which are your big, big streets, and your freeways, okay?
So.
Not on your local collectors and stuff like that.
So how would that differ from before right now?
Uh, only to the extent that you've got these other businesses that we're classifying as being more intense.
So wouldn't it be more appropriate to change the definition of limited, that is being proposed, limited highway commercial district to high-intense community business district or something, instead of having two highway commercial districts?
You mean change the name?
Yeah.
Sure, we could do that.
I mean, to me, that would make more sense, because, and the reason I say that is because B-four, as everybody knows it right now, was highway, and everybody's thinking major arterials and everything, now we're saying, okay, well, now we're gonna put major arterials, we're gonna put another zone on it, but it's like any major arterial that we have, with B-one, B-two, B-three, now we have B-four and B-five.
Right, well, I mean, we did it with.
I think the name changes would be, because highway is kinda misleading.
Sure.
You know, and if you, and I read your definition, where you're talking about arterials and stuff, and, and anybody who reads and go, well, it's kinda, without really knowing a lot about zoning, you're gonna think, well, you're limited to only using highway frontages or freeways, which is not the case. You, you may wanna be looking at renaming them, four and five, you know, something different, I don't know.
Okay.
As opposed to putting that highway, Commissioner Nervice?
So then, would you reclassify those that would fall under B-five, the ones that currently B-four, would fall under B-five, would you reclassify those as B-five, and the ones that aren't, would be considered grandfathering, or how would that work?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So the ones that are currently B-four, that would actually truly be a B-five highway commercial district, would those now be switched to B-five, or would you create a new zone? Would you?
They would be grandfathered.
They should be grandfathered, okay. But if the businesses are?
They'd be, they'd be legal, they'd be, they'd be legal, non-conforming uses.
So what would, which property would now be B-five, new properties that aren't zoned yet?
Right.
Okay.
Or that are zoned, but they wanna put something that is i- in the B-five zone there. So if they came in and they wanted to put a bar in, they would be applying for a B-five zone, not a B-four zone.
But, you know, you, you bring up a good point, if you have things that you're moving from a B-four to a B-five, wouldn't it be appropriate to say, well, you know what, I am changing your designation from four to five, because you meet the five criteria?
That would, that would be up to the council to unilaterally, uh, rezone them?
I mean.
I mean, they could do it?
It, it does make some kinda sense, right?
Well, it, it, it can be pretty arduous to do that, because then you're, you're actually not even looking at the existing use, you're just kind of taking a broad stroke and changing all these.
Based, based on what is being proposed, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's why you, that's why you have the, the, uh, the grandfathering issue, um, that allows them to continue, and if they close down, and then they wanna reopen after six months.
But here's the deal.
They come back and ask for the zone change at that point.
When we had the B-three, that was the highest intense use, then we created the B-four, because we needed, you know, the bars and everything else to go to, to the highways. Yet, we left a lot of properties that, you know, were B-threes, and now their use has gotta be a B-four, because the highest intense use was B-three before the B-four.
Mm-hmm.
Now we're doing the same thing again, we're saying, whatever was in a B-four now, that is supposed to be in a B-five, you know, 'cause we're moving the B-four use to a B-five, to me, if you already have an existing use, and it was a, a B-four, that is gonna now be an eligible use under B-five, that property should be zoned B-five right-of-way as we change the ordinance.
And included in that ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, because I remember the, the problems we've had in the past, well, I was, I, we had people come in and say, you know what, I had the highest use, which was B-three, now you changed it to B-four, now I'm out of compliance, when technically I was, you know, compliant before.
Mm-hmm.
Something to think about, and, and I agree with Commissioner Dominguez, obviously, this presentation to us on this was good, we still have to read it, and of course, it's gonna come back here for public hearing, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Right, I think, you know, that's good, then we will see your final draft, I guess, uh, and then we will, you know, have a public hearing here, and then from there, the, the commission can make a recommendation to the city council.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any timeframes, or?
No, we should bring it back at the next meeting, and, and, uh, maybe, maybe notice it as a public hearing, if that's what you'd like.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any other business before the commission, Mr. Brett?
Nothing else.
All right, motion to a jury?
Motion to a jury.
All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries, thank you very much, thank you all for attending.